Good morning. Today is August 10th. This is the work session for the Southampton Town Board. Can we please recite and rise for the pledge of the flag? I pledge allegiance
To the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, can you just take the role, please?
Certainly Supervisor Schneiderman. Somewhere Councilwoman McNamara.
I'm here. I'm sorry. I was muted, but I'm here.
That's okay. Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Skivoni.
I'm mute. John, you're on mute.
Present.
We also have Deputy Supervisor Frank Sapone.
Present. Thank you. This morning, the first item on the agenda is groundwater monitoring plan in connection with the Lewis Road PRD. Professor Petrovic is presenting. I'm assuming he might be online and Charles, can you verify?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Can we bring him on board so he can make his presentation? I don't see him yet. Professor Petrovic, you're on mute right now.
Marty, you're on mute.
There we go. How's that?
That's better. Good. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you would just take a few minutes to introduce yourself, Marty, and then we can begin with the presentation.
Yes, Marty Petrovic, Professor Emeritus of Horticulture at Cornell University, but I'm not here representing the university. Been in the field of turf grass management for forty plus years. And I did retire several years ago. I've worked on probably fifty golf course projects like this and then and within the town of Southampton, this is the third project that I've been working on. The other two, the Bridge and Sabonic Golf Club.
Okay, thank you. So I'm assuming that you have a presentation prepared on the monitoring plan proposed for this site?
It's going to be a verbal one because I wasn't, I didn't get, I was out of town and finally got back late Monday night to hear that this was on for Thursday morning. So if that's fine with you, I can walk through it and I'm certainly here to answer any questions you may have about the plan.
Well, Professor, first of all, I'd like to thank you for being here and to come here on such short notice. You know, you were able to fit it into your schedule. We had requested this. This is a resolution that's coming before the Town Board. And we certainly appreciate you coming and explaining what the plan is. So thank you.
Good. Thank you.
But Frank, I'm sorry. I think Janice Shearer should be on the, in the panel. I thought she was invited to this. I know she's standing by, but she just texted me.
Hi, John. I actually just got promoted as panelist. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, there you go.
I'm in a massive line of traffic on Montauk Highway. So sorry for being in the car, but we're dead stopped, so.
Okay, Janice, do you want to just guide this discussion, please?
Well, just to, you know, sort of set up why we're here and what we're doing, and that is that, as you know, Lewis Road is, has been approved for a residential subdivision with an accessory golf course. All our other golf courses have gone through sort of a PDD process where we end up with an agreement at the end for groundwater monitoring protocol based on what is known as an Integrated Health and Turf Management Plan, also known as ITHMP. And so we do that here as, you know, an ancillary step to the subdivision now. So in the end, the Town Board was concerned about whether we being able to approve a groundwater management plan. Technically, the Planning Board has approved that plan. And what is happening now is that the Town Board would understand what that plan is, know its contents and understand the protocols. Because as you remember, we just went through the five-year update for the Bridges Sabonic. And you see how that works in terms of the data and monitoring that goes on. And so the groundwater management plan is how we're going to put the monitoring wells in, how we're going to, you know, they're going to look at the site, monitor the groundwater health, and make sure that any activities of the golf course in terms of turf management do not impact groundwater. And so in the end, the Town Board will enter into a sort of a legal agreement, a contractual agreement. They will be required to follow the plan, pay for the testing. And that's how we, you know, how we do it with the other two golf courses. So and Marty has helped us do that. And him and Tom Cambrary, you may recall, are groundwater, he's also a groundwater specialist scientist. They look at all the data as time goes on, and then we do a five-year update in terms of what chemicals are used. And we really wanted to be an organic golf course and limited amounts of nitrogen. So, thank you.
Janice, just to be clear, the Planning Board already adopted the, accepted and adopted the actual plan. We are just basically being asked to enter into a contract with Dr. Petrovic, correct? The plan's already been adopted.
No, we entered into an agreement with, like, we accept an agreement from the applicant. You, the Town Board, accept an agreement with the applicant to do the, you know, effectuate the protocols that go on. That's, and the plan itself, yes, was approved by the Planning Board. So yeah, so with that, I would go back to Dr. Petrovic and talk about the actual, you know, content of the plan and the protocols to ensure that what you are getting is what you wanted. You know, and what we're getting agreed, you know, the agreements for is, you know, what was described all along in the process.
Right. Thank you, Janice. Marty, the stage is yours.
Yes. Well, it's, in developing any of these groundwater monitoring plans, this particular project is quite lucky that we have over twenty years of of actual data on the Bridge Golf Club and then about sixteen years on Sabonic Golf Club. And they pretty much modeled their plan on those two. And we've learned a lot through that. Now, these are not identical plans, but we took what we've learned on the other two golf courses over the past twenty years, and they got integrated into this particular plan. As with, as with any monitoring plan, probably the most critical part initially is where do you site the wells? And this property being a long, narrow property has upgraded groundwater-wise, has potential impacts from agricultural use. Is also there's a residential section upgrading from it also, which could be potentially causing impacts on any of the monitoring wells. So what was initially done is to try to get a handle on the groundwater flow. There's always a generalized map. And that part still being, will be refined because of all these additional wells that are being put in. And looking at the site, the sighting of these wells, we're trying to take into consideration anything that might be coming offsite and what might be happening onsite. So there are, there are three background wells that are trying to capture what's coming offsite primarily from the agricultural area. There is a, there are wells, there are a series of wells over the golf course section to try to look at parts of the golf course that might be impacting it. There will be future wells put in to see what the sewage treatment plant may be doing to groundwater quality, even though the discharge is not there. So it's trying to capture all the really important aspects. Because the worst thing to do is to stick a well in the middle of a property like this and not have any idea of what might be impacting it. And going further, as this, as this project goes forward and starts construction and eventually running the golf course, it, the ability to interpret the information is quite quite impacted by what the current situation may be in terms of offsite impact. And matter of fact, I received yesterday the latest kind of background sampling on the site. And it really points to this quite importantly. Two of the three background wells had nitrate levels over ten milligrams per liter of nitrate nitrogen, primarily coming from, appears coming from the agricultural areas. And actually, one of the monitoring wells on the site that's downgrading from the residential areas also had three or six milligrams per liter of nitrate nitrogen. So those are like initial things, has nothing to do with construction, has nothing to do with the operation of the golf course. But there are impacts there already. And those need to be, in going forward, to see what the golf course may be doing to it, we need to know what those levels are. So this background sampling, which is going on, there was another set taken, I think, two weeks ago. Those results are not in. But those initial ones are going to be quite important because we can't say the golf course is already showing eight no drops per liter of nitrate nitrogen in background well one and two, or three, in this case, two and three. It was already there, and it's coming from offsite. So looking at the, the orientation of the property of these kind of unique things of what may be coming offsite, it was determined that fourteen wells, monitoring wells, be placed over the property. Three background wells, two related to the sewage treatment plant, and the other ones related to activities on the golf course. And so that, I think the location, looking at that, the location seems appropriate for those fourteen wells. And it's going to, you know, provide an ability to determine what the golf course might be doing. And so that's the first part of citing. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on how they cited these. And I agree with where they were placed. And I actually made recommendations to put us, to move several ones to make sure we can show the impact from aspects of the golf course.
Predominantly downgrading from groundwater flow set to the southeast.
Correct, roughly. And it'll be, it gets, it'll get refined when all the groundwater depths of these monitoring wells are determined and determined over time. Because it was one of the kind of odd things, we had the, and if we look back at the other two golf courses, both those had thought the initial kind of background wells, which would not be impacted by the site, but offsite, were actually wrong. Once those were put in, they started being monitored, and an accurate groundwater flow map was determined. So this, so these wells initially make a lot of sense, but we'll see over time. Are any of those not, either not necessary because they're not doing what their purpose was? Or that maybe additional wells may need to be placed in. So even though it's, you know, it's not an exact science to start with, but the more data that's obtained onsite so that if an accurate groundwater flow map is determined, there may be changes that need to be done in the future.
And while we're on the monitoring wells, are they all going to be sunk at the same depth? Or is it different?
It, it, there's a slight variation in how deep those are. They're really trying to capture what's coming from the surface more than deeper in the aquifer. So that's why the screening, when they're, and that's why there's been a number of them in. I think there's still four that still needs to be installed. But those were placed to try to capture more of the surface impact of those, not deeper in the aquifer.
And how deep do those go?
Most of those are twenty to thirty feet deep. I'm trying to recall, twenty to thirty feet deep. And they're, and now they're being accurately measured as every time they sample, they measure the groundwater, the depth from the surface. And, and I didn't see, and I did get the information, but it didn't have depth of groundwater in the initial test, so I know. But they were put in specifically for surface impacts, more than the impact deeper in the aquifer.
You have the unique situation that you have a sand mine by the bridge, obviously, and you have a sand mine by this. Is that, does any, any impact of the sand mines being in relation to the golf courses? Do you see that in the bridge? Expect anything with this at all?
I would, I would not anticipate it, but that's always, again, these are things that, you know, with time, we'll learn a lot more.
Right, right.
And so this is
It's more, it's more the ancillary use, not so much the sand mining itself, but I guess if there's the other things like yard waste, whatever, that may be a contributor to it.
Which could be a contributor. It's interesting, these, the initial sampling also tested a series of pesticides. And two pesticides showed up, which is not surprising, amitocloprid and metaxyl. Those are two very mobile pesticides, very likely to move, not going to be used by the golf course. So it wasn't surprising that they already showed up. And those were the coming primarily, make sure. Primarily from off the agricultural areas. Those were, that's where those were coming. So it's, and that's why initially, you know, doing more than nitrogen, you need to do the spectrum of pesticides. And said those two are really commonly found in groundwater contaminated areas. So they're already there, not attributed to the golf course.
Marty, I had a question. How closely are you able to, I know you're testing basically water that is surface in origin. However, we do have a sub watershed study that's going on. Are your wells contributing to that study? Are you following the sub watershed mapping?
I'm, again, I'm mostly reviewing what the project is actually doing. So that, I haven't been involved in any part of that and not really aware of it. But it hasn't been part of my charge.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this program was developed by Paul Grosser Company. And so I'm just reviewing what they put in. They made changes based on the review that I did on this over time. And, and everything has been improved, I think, as the review. Because I initially looked at this in 2016. That's when it was first put before me. And it's changed. There was a diversion in 2021, and twenty-two, and now in twenty-three, some slight changes as based on review and based on information in that. And it's, again, it's moving in the right direction. I think it's as good as we can do at this point in time.
And John, if I could just add to that, when we, when CDM Smith was doing the groundwater monitoring, groundwater mapping modeling itself, we gave, we were able to give them all the data from the golf courses, and they were very grateful for that. So this will, in the end, we do give, we share the data with CDM Smith or whoever from the county so that they can use it for groundwater modeling.
Yeah, because it's important that we have a baseline, and I recognize that, but, you know, the baseline is shifting a beat right now. So it's, it's a challenge. I can totally understand that. So thank you, Janice.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions, Dr. Petrovic. So one of the claims of the developer is that their irrigation system will actually reduce nitrogen. This is the fertigation system. Are the position of the wells in the right location to see if that's true? That, you know, that the baseline nitrogen numbers are actually lowering in the water table after the irrigation?
Yes, I believe so. They are positioned in all the, I believe, the strategic areas on the site, and it should be able to pick up that, that impact. The background, it's interesting, so far, the other, all the other wells that were monitored at the end of June, there was nothing above point two seven milligrams of nitrate nitrogen in the other monitoring wells. There were, I shouldn't say it, there was one other one. But they ranged from almost nine on two of those, six on the one, which is downgrading of this spiny road develop, housing. One had a three milligram per liter and the rest, again, less than one. So right now, they're quite low in most of the, of the areas, but these four did, they did pick up those four areas with with elevated nitrate levels at this point.
When the Town Board was reviewing this, there was quite a bit of controversy as to the efficacy of fertigation and how much, if any, it would actually reduce nitrogen in the water table. So if we could get that data, so we would have a much better idea of if that's something that is a net positive. So the other thing, and I don't know if this is, if you're involved with this, but who, and maybe it's more a question for Janice, who does the IPM here? I know you had mentioned, Janice, something like you wanted it to be an organic golf course. It's not an organic golf course. They are using, they're using chemical pesticides here, synthetic pesticides, but it's part of an IPM program. So who, who is determining what the IPM here is going to be? How is that accepted, the IPM? By IPM, I mean Integrated Pest Management Programs.
Marty, do you want to answer that? Or do, I mean, there, I did say, you know, they are trying to use limited pesticides, let's say, like in certain applications. And I think that Dr. Petrovic that, and the, and the, an Integrative Health Management Plan is really to do everything you can do for soil science in order to not have to use chemical pest control. So there's a lot of, you know, like different mechanisms that you can use and sort of the last line of defense. Or you get there early and instead of like a big, you know, sort of fungal problem or something along those lines, you try to treat it early. So we, they, the Integrated ITHMP, the management plan was, was written by Jeff Seaman and reviewed also by Marty and his team. Is that fair to say, Marty?
Was
Go ahead, Marty.
Oh, yes. And it's, so as with any project like this, the developer proposes something. So they proposed a Integrated Turf Health Maintenance Plan. I reviewed it initially back in 2016. It was revised in the fall of 2022 and made significant improvements. Partially is that, you know, the science behind integrated pest management is always evolving, usually in a positive direction. And so they're using what we know right now is the state of art for integrated pest management. And that's something that someone in the future for the town will be reviewing. Water quality data, are they doing what they said in the Turf Health Maintenance Plan? Should there be changes to that if things are working or are not working? And so it's a, this is a point in time, and I think they developed a good one. It's based on good science, trying to use everything we know right now. But again, it's not a zero-use pesticide program. But, but by and large, the pesticides they will use have the least risk associated with them. Cornell developed a very rigorous evaluation program. It's called Field Environmental Impact Quotient. And for each pesticide, there is a number, and then depending on how much of that pesticide you put on, what the impact may be. So it takes into consideration workers' health, consumer health, effects on wildlife, water quality, hitting kind of all the big risk parameters you might find from using a pesticide. And they're only going to use ones that are on the low-risk end of things. There are some that are quite high that we would definitely not suggest they use those, but they've agreed to, by and large, use those unless there's some major emergency that everything else has failed. Because the worst thing environmentally that can happen is a bunch of dead grass. And you might say, well, why does that happen? As well, the, the grass is a very effective biofilter, both for pesticides and for retaining nutrients. So if you kill it off, you, then you run the risk, everything that's on there right now is going to start moving through the soil. And that's exactly what we don't want to happen. So it's a, it's kind of, it's definitely a win-win. It's good from a golf perspective, and it's good from an environmental perspective to have a very dense, healthy grass there.
So, so Janice, that plan, was that accepted by the Planning Board as part of the approval process?
Yes.
All right. So that can be reviewed, and they have to stick to that plan, right? So how do we enforce the plan?
The, it's monitored by us. It's also monitored by Marty Petrovic. It's also monitored by DNC. And the pesticide reporting is done by that. That's part of all these agreements. They, they agree via covenant that they're to follow these protocols. And, and then if anything shows up, they're sort of plans, right? They're following and It's mandatory, absolutely.
Okay.
And Janice, will this be posted on our website for anybody to review?
The plan itself? We can do that.
Or, well, the results, once the testing regimen goes into effect, it gets posted.
Um, we usually don't, I mean, we have like reams of testing things here. We have a whole file cabinet for all the golf courses. We can make, create a kind of portal that we can post it, if that's what people want. Sure.
So Janice, other question. We originally looked at this as a PDD. They alluded to, there was talk about fertigation systems. Are they still intending to use a fertigation system? And a follow-up to that is, obviously, you have the most intensive contribution from the Greens largely. I think that's kind of a rule of thumb. We could probably all agree to that. On some of the systems, they recapture the irrigation water. And that's testable at a point before it's released back. Is that the kind of system that's finally been adopted and approved? Because I'm unsure as to what irrigation type system they're using, where that's being monitored, tested, stored, and then released back into the environment.
And just to add on to that, and it's related, because I was thinking of this, are liners being installed under the T-boxes in Greens?
Janice, I'll answer that if you want me to.
Marty, answer. Thank you.
Okay. So, you know, it's interesting. I mean, fertigation usually means that you have an irrigation system, you inject fertilizers into it. But the irrigation well, again, even the most recent testing was eighteen milligrams per liter of nitrate nitrogen in it. So what they're doing is they're, they're using water that already naturally So what they're doing is they're, they're using water that already naturally, and I want to want to maybe use the word naturally, already currently found there. And that equates based on how much they're probably going to irrigate about a ton of nitrogen per year being removed out of that groundwater, being then applied over the golf course area. And that would end up being about a pound of nitrogen per thousand square feet. And they may find in time, they may not need to fertilize at all. We see those levels that the low levels of fertilization at the bridge, it's a little bit higher, it's Sabonic. So long term, once this garage course is established, that may be all they need to, they may not need to apply anything other than irrigation water. The Greens are lined and the liners, unlike Sabonic, for the most part, are not redirected into an irrigation area because they're they're irrigating from from wells, not from a pond. However, the discharge goes through a rain garden to try to effectively treat that water going out before it's released. And and rain gardens tend to be slow release also of of the amount of water coming out. There is an ability to test those. And I think they'll, that would kick in primarily if something started showing up where it's unexpected. But these liners, they've been a very effective at Sabonic at capturing water and reusing it and effectively not picking up anything in the irrigation pond that that partially comes from the drainage that comes out of the those greens. So I think I, I think I covered all the points you were asking on that. But if there's any follow up questions.
I just wanted to point out that Paul Grocer, who wrote the groundwater management plan, and Jeff Seaman, who wrote the pest management plan are both on, if anybody had questions for them, they're currently listed as attendees.
So Marty, I I and I appreciate what you're saying. I'm just wondering if there is a, how often that testing regimen is takes place? In other words, what I think I'm understanding is that no testing takes place until something that's indicated need to test, particularly in the closed loop system. So is there at least a yearly monitor of that, of those levels?
If Paul's on, he may be able to answer that better than me if if Paul's on the on the call.
Charles, can we bring on Paul Grocer and Jeffrey Seaman?
And I have a question about a closed loop system, Councilman. John, you said this is a closed loop system?
Well, I'm not sure.
More than open.
Lots of different types of systems that are that are in use. I mean, there are some that are, you know, their irrigation is closed, water's recollected, and then goes either back into the environment or into a, as as Dr. Petrovic was saying, into a sort of a rain garden or some sort of natural way to absorb those, particularly when it comes to pesticides, that's something else again. But that's what I'm referring to when I'm saying a closed closed loop system.
Right, right. And that was kind of the nature of my question with the liners, you know, whether or not there are suction lines in those, in those liners to reuse the, to reuse the water, you know, from the fertilized T boxes and greens. But they go through rain gardens.
A closed loop, but Marty, again, would be best to say.
Yeah, so it's, unlike Sabonic, Sabonic is a closed loop system from the Greens. It's all captured and put into the irrigation pond and then re, then irrigated back on Greens. So that in that effect, it is a closed system. This one with the rain gardens is not a close, but it's a, it's a treatment of that water before it's discharged. Going through the rain garden as a treatment.
But not tested on a regular basis?
Not that I'm aware of. We've had, you know, we've had this discussion that it 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 wouldn't hurt to be tested frequently, or not frequent, be tested. And and so that's why I wanted Paul to come on to add any further comments to it. I I I don't believe at this point it's supposed to be routinely tested.
Yeah, yeah. Good morning. The the intent was not to routinely test it, but it was the outflows are going to be essentially monitored. So if there's some significant flow coming out of those outflows from the Greens, then it would be worthwhile to test it. But we we don't know how much we're going to get at this point off of those Greens. But if we we're seeing a significant amount, sure, there would be a testing of it to see where it goes, you know, what's going into that rain garden.
And that would just be nutrient testing?
It's hard to say right now. We'll have to see if there's going to be, you know, if there's a significant use of pesticide on the green, then, you know, we probably would want to test for that as well.
All right.
I'll check it at the beginning.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
Just to get back, you know, there was one question on the depth of the wells. They're not all the same depth, and and the reason they're not all the same depth is elevation of the land changes and the depth of water changes. All of the wells are screened five feet above the water table and ten feet into the water table. So they're designed to capture that top portion of the water table, which would be most impacted by the turf above it.
Are there any other questions for either Mr. Grocer or Marty?
Under the agreement, that's, you know, is the basis of the resolution before the town board where we pay Mr. Petrovic or Dr. Petrovic and then DLV reverses us to execute this plan. If if we want to make changes to the plan later on, adding wells or testing for additional contaminants and things like that, can we do that, you know, latterly, or do we need agreement from DLV? Is that, obviously, they have to pay the bill ultimately. But is it in our jurisdiction or our control to modify this plan? Janice, maybe maybe you have the answer to that.
Well, we kind of do that at the five year mark, unless there's some, you know, other issue. Recently, you've allowed me to sign off on minor amendments when it comes to certain things. But usually as we get the data in, and Marty and Mr. Petrovic has been saying, you know, you you may want to move a well, you may render a certain type of well, you know, doesn't need, you know, we don't need it, or we need another one, or this chemical isn't working, et cetera. So we we wait for a five year period and then we review it, unless there's some egregious thing happening, of course. But usually it's as we get all the data together at the five year mark, we review what the data is showing us. And then Dr. Petrovic and Tom Cambrary make recommendations related to those changes. And then we usually go to the golf course, do a tour, talk about the changes with the superintendent. They show us what, you know, they've been doing and they talk about, you know, they're usually very good about, you know, complying. And then what we do is.
Consent, or is it just the town determines what the changes are?
It's usually done by mutual consent, I would say. And then and so far, real issue with saying they would, aren't going to do anything. We just like to have the agreements in place. And what we do is we fund sort of a line item and we pay out the consults. We like to pay the the like WS will be doing.
Janice, if it's determined in the in the future that the rain gardens aren't working the way perhaps was intended, is there a way to retrofit the irrigation system to connect the piping system? And I'm assuming there's a piping system from the, from the liners underneath the Greens to these rainfields. Could we require that the water that comes off of the Greens get circulated back into the irrigation system and make it a more closed loop system?
I think that's probably Dr. Petrovic or Paul Grocer, but I I would, I would, anything's not working, we always have the ability to go back and and change it.
Okay.
So and so the reason, if I could just follow up on that, usually those, I mean, there is in in the plan a protocol to if something starts showing up in a well, what are the steps? So usually retesting is the first thing. So occasionally, it was, you know, it was an unusual number. Sometimes internally, the lab has to retest themselves because we've had lab errors that have showed up, which does cause some controversy. But that's rare, but that could happen too. And then if it's above thresholds that we've set, the first thing that happens, they can't use that product again until those levels go back down. So unless it's something that it's never going to leave the system, probably you wouldn't necessarily have to go to that extreme of of recapturing. They just won't be able to use those. There's there's enough materials there that that they could lose some and still be able to have a viable golf course. But that would be, that would be pretty extreme, but it's not, I mean, it's not totally impossible. But 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 the protocol pretty quickly kicks in that they've got to stop. And it's in an area because a well doesn't just measure just above it, it's capturing a zone. And that zone has to be changed, that whatever's causing the impact, whether it's fertilizer nitrogen, whether it's a specific pesticide, but those things have to quickly be changed or immediately stopped, usually stopped until the retesting is done to see if that's a true value. And it may kick in more frequent testing, if that's the case also, to make sure we're we're, we see when it's there. And usually eventually, all these things do go away, but it may take a while. There's some lingering ones that either at the bridge or Sabonic that are still there at very low levels and it may take a while for them to totally go undetected. Because detection levels are pretty doggone low.
So just to follow up on that, typically, you test for nutrients and pesticides. Do you, is is there a time when there's also, particularly on some of these more sophisticated irrigation systems and fertilization systems, is there ever testing for other types of chemicals? Plastics, hardeners, things like that? Or the chemical that's used for maintenance over a period of time to clean out the systems? You know, I I'm just kind of curious as to how that is. I mean, you can only know you have a problem when you when you're testing for that problem. And there's a lot of problems you could test for. And obviously, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to test for everything. But there are some things that are specific to these types of systems that have become known over time and and probably should be tested for, you know, in in certain durations at certain points over over the time with the use of the of the system. Is is there any, has there been any discussion about that at all? I mean, I, you know, when I'm I'm looking at Bicep and all example, you know, this is, this is a product of plastics. And it's becoming more of a problem. And it's something that should probably be tested for on occasion over time, just to make sure that we don't have a problem. I mean, it determines the age of the system, it's, you know, it's an indicator, it's, you know, I'm kind of rambling on here, but I think you get the gist of my question.
I think it it would be advisable to do that. And probably initially, just to see the initial phases. I mean, is there a background level of any of these things, especially the forever chemicals? And then after the course is in operation, again, to see if there's a change in that. Because a lot of this is really, has to be viewed as a change, is it increasing, decreasing? Or not there at all, which is what you hope it is. But it is really a, has to be looked at as a change. And each of the wells themselves have to be looked at individually. And that's what we found in these other golf courses, that we see things quite often, it may be one well, not all ten or three showing issues.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason I bring that up is that as as we move along, this kind of stuff informs better systems going forward. And, you know, without that, you just keep doing the same thing over and over. And I think it moves us as a town to, you know, try to be a little bit proactive in that respect. And anyway, that's just, I'm making a statement, not a question. Thank you, Marty.
I have a follow up question on that, probably maybe for Mr. Seaman. How often, I understand the IPM program has a quite a broad list of products that can and can't be used? And those types, those products really change, can change rather rapidly? What is the ability to pivot and change and add and remove items from that list? And what's the approval process on that?
I don't know who you're asking, Cindy.
I think that would be a Jeffrey Seaman question. It'd be here.
Par- partially. I mean, we, the the agreement, I'll just answer just one part of it. The the minor changes, which is usually adding or removing a particular material, Janice is in the position to do that. Because it 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 seems funny to have to come to the town board each time to to make a small change. And there haven't, in the other two courses, there haven't been many changes over the years. When new products come on, it's obviously advisable to consider those because they're usually safer than what the older materials are. But to make that a slightly simpler process, because I I thrown any fire, gas on a fire, but there were, there was a time where it took more than two years for the town board to 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 look at a request for a change. And it probably didn't need to take that amount of time. So I think to make it more efficient, Janice, in this agreement, Janice has the ability to to make those minor changes without having to come to the town board.
That was really my question that I answered. Thank you.
Okay. Janice and anybody in her position, we'll use her as an example.
The good news is I was actually in my former life, a pesticide control specialist for the DC.
Just circling back on the questions regarding the rain gardens, we do have a number of monitoring wells that are specifically designed to monitor those rain gardens. So we'll see if there's an impact on the groundwater from them. So that kind of closes the loop as far as monitoring as to whether there's an actual impact.
And the water from the Greens eventually gets discharged back into the aquifer. I mean, that's after it goes through the biofilter of the rain garden.
Correct.
So does each, does each green have a little verdant area, green, you know, rain garden area near it? Or is it pumped to a distant rain garden? How how does that transfer happen?
Most of it is is a gravity feed to a a nearby rain garden or into the irrigation pond as well.
You get a free drop out of there?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you, Marty, or Janice, any other questions from the board? Okay, there being none, thank you both and Mr. Grocer as well for your input and response to the board's questions. Our next item on the agenda is an update on the North Sea Beach Colony Beach Erosion Control District. And I think we have Kathleen and Mr. Takunian.
They're coming in.
There's Aaron. And there's Kathleen. Good morning.
Good morning, board members.
Good one.
And Charles, if you could also please let in Grace Andrews, if you see her.
She's coming.
Thank you. And also, Charles, would it be possible to allow Grace to share her screen for the presentation?
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you.
Board, before Grace, um, gets into her presentation on the, uh, the fabulous Olivine Carbon Capture Beach Project, I just want to give you a quick update on the, um, status of the performance of, of the beach, uh, nourishment project and also of the ongoing, um, disaster relief, uh, reimbursement effort that, uh, I'm undertaking with Ryan Murphy from, uh, from Public Safety. The long and the short story is that, uh, the beach is performing extremely well. We've done numerous pre and post, uh, nourishment surveys to verify that. And, uh, the, um, all of my communications with the E C D Advisory Board, indicate that the community is very pleased with what's going on. As you know, there was a disaster declaration for Suffolk County as a result of Winter Storm Elliot, um, in this past January. And the North Sea Beach Colony Beach Erosion Control District, as well as the Sagaponic and the, um, Breach Hampton Erosion Control Districts all qualified for potential disaster assistance, as did Town Beaches at Tiana and Sandbar. Uh, my office, um, is working with Ryan Murphy on all of those. And with respect to, um, North Sea Beach Colony, uh, we've collected, um, post-storm, uh, surveys, which will allow us to quantify the loss of sand and, uh, determine how much of that is, um, is reimbursable by the federal government. Questions, I'm happy to chat for a moment before Grace gets into our uh, really terrific, wonderful project on Olivine Car- Carbon Capture.
So, and I'll really quick, if I may, while Grace is uploading that, um, if you recall, board members, in May of two thousand twenty-two, so about a year ago, um, Aaron came, Aaron came to you and gave a presentation on, um, the use of this product. It was about five hundred cubic yards of it placed on the North Sea Beach, Beach Erosion Control District shoreline. And so this is an update as to how that's performed.
Yep. Thank you so much. Um, good to see everyone. Um, and thank you so much for, uh, giving us some time to share the results from the project with you.
Grace, if, uh, if I could introduce you because you're a very humble person. And, um, Dr. Andrews is, uh, probably one of the world's leading experts on carbon capture. She's been working in this field for well over a decade. Um, uh, initially starting, uh, doing projects on farm fields and now doing, uh, these projects, um, in ocean waters and bay waters throughout the world. She is, uh, published in international journals. She has presented no less than fourteen or fifteen, presentations just in the last two years, um, all over the world. And, um, she's, uh, really, she's our science leader of the Vesta Group, which is about fifty scientists, um, all over the world working on this project. So Grace, you would never say those things because you're far too humble. So thank you for letting me.
I appreciate that, Aaron. I'm impressed by how well you've memorized my career. Uh, yeah. So thank you so much. Um, we wanted to share, take this moment. So, uh, as, uh, as Kathleen said, we started this project at the North Sea Beach Colony about a year ago. Um, so we have, uh, about a year's worth now of data, um, and results from the project, uh, to share with you, talking about, you know, our successes there. So, um, without further ado, I wanted to start by just giving a quick refresher on who we are, why we're here, you know, best of that is, uh, and then get into the, the actual, uh, heart of the project. So, uh, first and foremost, so I'm the chief scientist at a public benefit corporation called BETHA. And we are a carbon dioxide, uh, R and D company, carbon dioxide removal R and D company. Um, and the primary strategy for carbon dioxide removal, and I should say this is a climate mitigation approach, is where we take a naturally occurring, uh, mineral called Olivine. Uh, we can grind that into sand and make it compatible with beach nourishment projects. Then we can add it to beach nourishment projects, um, in, you know, collaboration with ongoing beach nourishment projects, like we've done here at the North Sea Beach Colony. Um, there it can contribute to coastal protection, but it also has the benefit of sort of slowly, um, slowly, uh, dissolving over the course of decades, um, in the presence of seawater. And that, that, that process actually takes carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere. So it's something that we're excited about because it has the potential to help mitigate the impacts of climate change as well as contribute to climate adaptation. So we think this is really compelling and this is, as Aaron said, these kinds of strategies are what I've really spent my whole career working on. So I'll highlight that this process, this process by which the Olivine sand actually takes carbon out of the atmosphere is a completely natural process. So this, this is in fact the sort of geochemical process that regulates Earth's atmosphere over long time scales anyway. So what we're doing is something that happens all the time, all around us, on every beach that you're already walking on. But through this process of adding Olivine sand, we're simply accelerating the rate of carbon removal. That's another one, another one of the reasons why I'm really excited about this, because it's, it's a very, um, inherently natural process. So just to give you a sense of what is Olivine, uh, this mineral that you've maybe never heard of. So as I said, it's a naturally occurring mineral. These green dots show you it's located all over the world, so very common. Um, it's a silicate mineral, so that means it has a really, really similar structure to the quartz, which is what makes up most beaches anyway. The difference is it's basically got a little bit of magnesium in it. And as I said, you can grind it into any kind of sand distribution you want to make sure that you're creating a grain size distribution that is customized to the beach where you might want to apply it. And, uh, I'll say, you know, Olivine, again, naturally occurring. This is something that you find in the state of New York as well. If you guys are driving along the Hudson River around New York City, you look at the Hudson River cliffs, those cliffs, uh, have a really big component that's about forty percent Olivine up. So again, it's common and locally found. This is a geochemistry slide, so I apologize if you feel like you're back in high school's geochemistry class, but I wanted to highlight sort of the two-step reaction here, the way that this works. Um, it's, takes CO2 out of the atmosphere by producing what's called a carbonic acid. That's again, something that just happens all the time in seawater. Anyway, we're not doing that. But when you take that acid and react it with the mineral Olivine, then you can turn what was CO2 into something that's called bicarbonate. This is also, this bicarbonate is also what offsets ocean acidification. So there's actually a third benefit here that I didn't touch on, which is that this can also contribute to reducing ocean acidification, which is another, of course, uh, negative impact of climate change. And the reaction here is pretty, uh, optimal in that for every cubic yard of Olivine sand you put on a beach, you capture about a ton of carbon dioxide from the atmosphere.
And it works to change the pH level of the water body that it's affecting. So in the bays, it's making it a bit more base.
That's right. That's right. Yep. Which is good for marine life. Yep. Um, this is just showing, uh, it of, you know, this Olivine sand, it captures carbon. It also takes some carbon to run the project. We run what's called life cycle assessments to make sure that the project actually will be carbon negative when we do it. So this is the actual life cycle assessment for the project at North Sea Beach Colony. And it's, uh, expected with the five hundred cubic yards of Olivine that we added to capture about four hundred and forty tons of CO2, which is about equal to the annual emissions from a hundred cars. So it's a really small project, but it still has, uh, meaningful, sizable impact relative to exam, relative to, for example, uh, the, uh, population at North Sea Beach Colony, right? So this is a project that every household at North Sea Beach Colony can say that they just took a hundred, took a year of annual emissions off of their cars. So, um, what did we actually do? So this is, uh, the North Sea Beach Colony. They did a ten thousand cubic yard beach renourishment last summer, um, to which, as we said, we added about five hundred cubic yards of Olivine, uh, in July, twenty twenty-two. So this is a picture of the Olivine actually being added to the beach. We added it right in the intertidal zone. And this is what the beach looked like a few months later. So back to normal, looking, looking great. This is just a map of the design around our monitoring program that we took. So a key aspect of what we wanted to do was study really everything we could think of with regards to the beach. So we set up an experimental design where we monitored both where the beach had been nourished with only regular beach nourishment sand, where it had been nourished with Olivine and beach nourishment sand. And then on either side of the project area is controls. And so this was the framework, uh, that we, uh, monitored the program under. So we did this program with what's called a before-after-control impact design or a F A C I design, which means we, of course, monitored the site before the nourishment took place, after the nourishment took place, and we're doing this monitoring for, uh, two years. So as I said, we're about a year in, we're halfway there. So year one complete and we've begun year two, uh, in April, twenty twenty-three. We have been looking at the water, uh, at the project site. We've been collecting sediment cores to understand the actual sediments, the grain size, the mineralogy. We've been doing geomorphology studies, so we've been doing bathymetric surveys to look at, uh, how the beach is performing. We've been studying the wave dynamics and the sediment transport. And we've been doing quite a lot of work on the ecology, um, looking at, uh, environmental impacts. So looking at the species that live in the intertidal zone, those are the phentic species, um, but also looking at microbial communities, looking at chlorophyll A, which is a proxy for, um, algae growth, phytoplankton. So we've been doing all of this. We've got some fantastic academic collaborators that are working on this with us. So we've got multiple people from Stony Brook University, the Cornell Cooperative Extension, and we also have someone actually from Hamilton College as well. So we've been doing all of this work, um, and really excited to, as I said, share some of the work coming out of it. So this is some data highlighting just some of the water quality results we've done, um, we've collected. So, uh, what we've done here is we have plotted our data from a water quality sound that we installed in the bay and has been collecting continuous data since before the project. Um, that's all the green lines here, and then we're comparing it to some of the publicly available, uh, USGS monitoring stations elsewhere in the Peconic Bay. So those are the green, I'm sorry, the red and blue lines. And this is again, looking at things like chlorophyll A, the pH, the dissolved oxygen in the overlying water column. And the, the key result here is really that there's been no discernible long-term impacts on any of these metrics. So we're not, we're not seeing, um, any sort of negative consequences of the project, which is great. You know, one of the benefits of what we're doing is that it can have a positive impact on pH, but I'll highlight here that in this sort of large-scale regional, um, framework that these data are collected on, you would not actually expect to see a pH change because the project is just so small, but we'd be looking for those pH changes in a much, uh, uh, finer resolution, right? Immediately sort of at that sediment-water interface. But at the Peconic Bay scale, you wouldn't expect it. So this is consistent with, with what we anticipated.
Could I ask you a question? Why you're just looking at chlorophyll A and not other chlorophylls? I know Chris Gobler's, uh, you know, we're looking at, at other, other chlorophylls. I'm just wondering why you're just looking at chlorophyll A.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this is, this is the, the primary, um, the primary tracer for overall algae growth. You can certainly do other work, but this is the sort of standard one that, um, uh, there's the most data on that we can compare to other sites. That's the primary tracer. That's, uh, you can, um, have readily available on water quality songs, otherwise you really have to go to sort of discreet sampling and such, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Another, um, another great result here. So like I said, we really wanted to focus on the phentic communities. So the communities of marine organisms actually living in and on the sediment where we did the nourishment. And as those will be the communities that you could expect to see the largest impact on because they're living right there in the Olivine. So one of the metrics we were looking at this is what's called community structure. Did we have any impact on the abundance of mer- of phentic organisms? Or the richness of organisms, basically thinking about the diversity of organisms that you find at the project site? So we did some, as I said, baseline surveys to get a handle on what the site looked like before we did the project. And then we did, um, showing you your data from about two months after we did the nourishment, uh, so that's the post-deployment data sets, both for both of these indices. And basically what we saw, to sum it up, was that by August, there was no difference in the Olivine-treated site. Those are the green relative to the other three types of locations. We monitored the controls and the nourishment only. So that tells us a few things that, um, one, within two months, uh, the communities, the phentic communities had actually already rebounded from the nourishment. So one of the, um, known impacts of beach nourishment broadly is that it can have a smothering effect on phentic communities. Basically you add a lot of sand and it can have a smothering effect, and that's true for all beach nourishment. Um, and the literature tells us that the timeline where you get that rebound in the phentic communities is typically between two months and maybe a year or two, depending on the site. So what we see here is that by August, the areas that had received nourishment sand, both Olivine and, uh, regular nourishment sand, were already back to similar levels, uh, as the control sites. So we had total community rebound within about two months. And there was no difference between the Olivine and the regular nourishment sites as well. So the Olivine had no impact on this. So in general, this just tells us this is a really healthy community, fast rebound and no impact from Olivine. So just very good results all around. We, uh, also did, uh, what we're calling an oyster experiment at the site. So oysters don't naturally, uh, grow at the North Sea Beach Colony, but they're really key indicators for, um, sort of, I always think of it as the, the canary in the coal mine for sort of water pollution, you know, so they're really good at accumulating harmful pollutants, right? That's something they're known for. Um, and so we wanted to do a study where we actually uh, introduced oysters in oyster bags to the site at different locations along the beach, both in the Olivine area and outside of it at the other sites to, to look at, you know, any potential impacts, whether there was any impact on pollution levels, um, associated with the project. And of course, this is also just broadly an important study to do, given the importance of oysters in the shellfish industry. Um, so this is oysters collected two months after the nourishment. Um, so oysters living right there in, in bags on top of the Olivine, um, for two months. And we're looking at the levels of key elements here, like nickel, chrome, leads over here, copper down here. Uh, we analyzed a whole suite of metals and across the board, we saw no impact, um, on pollutant levels, um, due to the Olivine placement. So this is again, a really, really great result. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to highlight and sort of this, well, this highlight reel of data is just some of the results in carbon removal. Um, so again, you know, the idea here is to introduce the Olivine to take carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere. One of the tricks with doing a such a small project, of course, is that when we introduce Olivine, again, it's dissolution rate, that rate of carbon removal is very gradual. So again, over the course of the years, you know, that kind of timeline. And so we're looking for a really small sort of instantaneous signal that's inherently getting diluted by a volume of water the size of the Peconic Bay. Um, so it's a, it's a hard thing to measure and it's a big part of the true sort of technological R and D that the F A C I does, is figuring out ways to actually make these measurements and demonstrate the carbon removal benefit. So one way that we do this is we deploy what are called phentic flux chambers, which you can kind of simply think of that as an upside-down bucket, really, that you put at the, on the seafloor. It captures a sort of parcel of water in the bucket. You leave it out for about one, two, three, five days, and it prevents the dilution of your carbon removal signal by the rest of the Peconic Bay. So you can, it allows you to accumulate that signal through time. And so this is some of the data from, again, Olivine sites versus control sites. This was all data collected about three months after we initiated the project. And here you can start to see that in the Olivine-treated site, the pH is going up. That's good. That is the, uh, reduction in ocean acidification we've been talking about. You see this, um, alkalinity going up. What's called dissolved in again, a carbon stays the same. These are all the hard hallmarks of the carbon removal benefit taking place. So this is exactly the kind of data we are looking to see and gives us the confidence that it is doing its job in terms of capturing carbon and reducing ocean acidification. So this was great as well. I just want to highlight, that's the highlight reel of the sort of science, but I just want to highlight some of the other initiatives we've been going, have been going on during this time. So we've been trying to, we've been working with the community in every capacity that we can think of, really. So before the project, as some of you will know, we held some press conferences. We engaged with the media, got some newspaper articles out there. We made sure everyone in the community knew what was going on. We installed flyer boards, notice boxes, handed out fact sheets. But subsequent to the project, we've initiated a really good student-scientist program. So we've had now something like over ten high school students working with us at the project site, doing independent research. And so this has been a great way that we've been able to get back to the community and make sure that we're providing some benefits. So this is one of the local residents at the North Sea Beach Colony. He did an internship with us last summer. And it's, it's been a, it's been a great opportunity. We've been issuing quarterly newsletters, making sure that we're keeping different stakeholders up to date on how the project has been going. And I'm very happy to say, we recently, over Memorial Day weekend, had a commemorative plaque ceremony with the North Sea Beach Colony community. So we, Vesta gifted them a plaque marking it as the site of the world's first carbon-removing beach. I was able to speak with the community, got able, able to answer a lot of questions, got great feedback. And then we have actually installed this plaque on the beach to mark this important location. So it's been just a really tremendous, honestly, highlight of my career, working with the North Sea Beach Colony. So I'm deeply grateful for that.
A quick question. Are, are you working at all with members of the Pecan Gestuary Partnership? I know it's been a subject of discussion, it was sort of heated discussion early on, but they settled down. I think I see why, but I'm just curious if you're, if you have been working with any of those folks.
Yeah, so one of our key collaborators from working with us on the ecology program is Matt Sclafani. And he is also in a leadership role at the Pecan Gestuary Partnership. So we do have that cross collaboration there. He's working.
Pretty well, so.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah.
The other thing is, Council Bouvier, is that, you know, we plan on reaching out to Pecan Gestuary Partnership, as well as, you know, the group for the East End and the Nature Conservancy to give them this kind of update, but we felt it was important to give it to this board first.
Well, and I appreciate that, Aaron, because one of the subjects of discussion in the PEP is, is model code for coastal resiliency. And, you know, this would fall under some of that, informing some of that code, I believe. So the timing might be really right at some point to, to discuss that with the partnership.
Great.
Dr. Andrews, thank you very much. Aaron, Kathleen, is there anything else that you wanted to share, if there are any other questions from board members?
Frank, I have, I have a question, you know. The, the plaque, which, you know, signifies the location as the first, I'm assuming that there's plans, particularly with the success of this, to roll it out in other locations. So I guess my question is more like a bang-for-the-buck kind of question. Is this financially a viable, long-term way to reduce CO2 in the environment, whether it's through carbon credits or whatever it might be, or other subsidies? But is, is this a, does it make sense? Do we get a good return on investment from this approach?
Yeah, that's a fantastic question. Yeah, so the short answer is yes, it, it does make sense. It is, so the way that we envision financing projects in the future, as you, as you said, is through the sale of carbon credits. And so right now, there is a whole carbon market out there for the sale of carbon removal credits. And right now, they, you can sell carbon credits for something like up to a thousand dollars a ton of CO2 removal. So it's big, big numbers. Of course, people think those numbers will come down through time, but when we have run our economic models on what this could look like at scale, you know, we think that this can be highly cost-effective and in fact, actually help, very much help end up being a cheaper source of sand than typical beach nourishment projects because you can offset the price of sand with the, with the sale of the carbon credits. So, yeah.
So just to follow up on that, I'm assuming that the way this product is harvested is through a mining process, but then there's also a post-treatment. You're grinding it and you're doing some other things to it. And I think you'd mentioned that you looked at the offset of the carbon produced to produce versus the carbon that you actually do reduce as in total. Could you just describe the mining process somewhat? You know, and the reason I'm asking this is because we constantly run into problems, obviously, with sand mining for all the obvious reasons. You know, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, their, their deep-water mine, all those, those kinds of things. So could you just describe the process of mining?
Yeah, yeah. So I think, as just a starting point, it's helpful to note that right now, you know, there are operational olivine mines all over the world, including in the US. And the, the demand for our olivine sand is not maxed out, right? So there is more olivine available, capacity for olivine mining than is currently in demand for. So there is really millions of tons of olivine sand capacity already available. So this kind of work wouldn't require any additional mining capacity for the next ten years, fifteen years plus. So that said, you know, all that to say, no new mines will have to be opened, no new projects of that nature.
I'm sorry to interrupt this, but you're saying that there's, there's basically a world stockpile of this material that's already available? When that no longer is, is the case, or prior to that, are there? Is it, is it mined typically the way sand is mined? And then we, we have re, you know, we have to refill a sand mine once it can't produce sand anymore with, with external fill and all the, all the difficulties that municipalities have to go through in order to qualify that material. Is that the same case in the case of mining olivine?
Actually, it's not really the same because the olivine is mined as a rock and then ground into whatever size is required for the particular application. So there are the obvious, you know, not obvious, but the various state and federal requirements that apply to each mine. We don't have any olivine mines in New York State that I'm aware of. There, there are a bunch in North Carolina. I think the largest one is in Warren, Ohio. There's a bunch on the West Coast. So, you know, it's, it, it goes through a more traditional mining process as opposed to the way sand is mined, which is more of a strip mine.
Okay, all right.
Dr. Andrews, have you evaluated the carbon footprint relative to the amount of carbon it takes to mine the olivine, grind it and transport it as compared to what it actually produces when it's on the beaches?
Yeah, yeah. So that's indeed, that's what is captured when we do a life cycle analysis, as it goes through all of the potential sources of emissions. So that is the mining of the material, the grinding of the material, the transportation to your, to, to your project site, the emissions from just placing it, right? The wheel loaders for, the wheel loaders out on the beach, as well as the emissions from actually monitoring it, right? Every time I drive to Southampton, there are emissions from that. I'm based in New Jersey. So, you know, so the LCA captures all those emissions and then you, you compare that against the carbon removal potential of the olivine. And that's where we come up with that, that calculation that tells us that this project is about eighty-six percent efficient. So the one particularly in North Sea Beach is about eighty-six percent efficient. So in other words, of, of all the carbon you initially capture with the olivine in the, in the, in the, in the beach, you actually keep about eighty-six percent of that. The other piece is offset by the emissions. So I'm still very carbon negative.
And have you, thank you. And have you evaluated the economic impact of scaling up olivine placement on beaches? Would something like this produce jobs here in the United States?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess worldwide. It's a worldwide market for olivine from your comments, or I'm surmising from the comments earlier. But is this something that, you know, we could possibly, you know, scale up here in the United States?
Absolutely. I mean, yeah, I mean, so every piece of this supply chain, one of the things that's nice about it is the infrastructure to do these kinds of projects is identical to the infrastructure that you need for beach nourishment. So this would be simply additive to the supply chain pieces that are already in place. And it has some nice benefits in that because of the fact that it doesn't require dredging and other sort of environmental impacts associated with that. You can deploy these projects at times of year when other dredging projects are potentially not viable. So it could help, you know, allow for sort of beach nourishment projects to happen year-round. And it also is a way potentially in the monitoring of these projects to involve even local fishermen, for example. I mean, going out and dropping off, you know, sort of buoys, retrieving buoys. This is things that you really, you know, kind of need a standard fishing vessel. And that's actually one of the approaches we've taken so far is to employ local fishermen to go out and, you know, retrieve and deploy equipment on our behalf. So there are some interesting opportunities there.
It's exciting. Does Vesta have any, last question, Councilman. Does Vesta have any other locations where they're, where they have plans to install or have already placed olivine on beaches?
Yeah, so our, our other currently operational project is in Massachusetts. We have done that project, actually on the Cape Cod National Seashore. If anyone ever goes there, vacations there, if you do, you can go see another project site. We've done that one in partnership with the National Park Service, the US Geological Survey and Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute. And that's actually been deployed in a marsh setting. So it's a little bit different. It's looking at marsh restoration with olivine sand, and we think there's a lot of potential too. So that's our other current operational site.
Where is that located?
Cape Cod.
Cape Cod National Seashore, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Oliver, Dr. Oliver, Dr. Andrews.
I just had one question while before.
All right, I'll let John go first.
But what the price, what, what is the current price per cubic yard of olivine compared to a sand that's acquired right now? Do you, do you even have a number like that?
We do, we do have a number. It's not typically sort of publicly shared. The price, but I can say broadly, the price of olivine sand is just if you look at apples to apples, is more expensive than beach nourishment sand. The reduction in cost comes when you factor in that you can offset the price of the project with the sale of carbon credits. And that makes, that makes nourishing with olivine sand something like fifteen percent cheaper than a typical beach nourishment project.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's related to what I was going to ask, but the, you said this earlier when you were doing this like geometry a little bit of oliv, of the olivine, but it's for, for a ton of, let's say, ground-up olivine. How much carbon dioxide removal do you get or sequestration do you get? Is it one or is it four to one or?
Yeah, so for, for one cubic yard of olivine, you get one ton of CO2 removal.
One cubic yard, but it's probably, a cubic yard is probably close to a ton, right?
Yeah, so when, if you do it tons for tons, it's point seven.
So, okay, so for points, which direction? Point seven tons of olivine leads to one ton of CO2 sequestration or the other way around?
The other way around. So it's zero point seven tons of CO2 per ton of olivine.
Okay, that's, sounds like the numbers are really, really good from a financial perspective.
Yes.
Okay.
So talking about, you know, future follow-on projects, just want to let the board know that I've opened discussions with the North Sea Beach Colony Erosion Control District Advisory Board about a, a second potential deployment. The, this past dredging season, Suffolk County dredged the North Sea Harbor inlet and, and deposited about 10,000 cubic yards of material onto the property immediately to the west owned by the Drucken millers. And the district has an arrangement to move a percentage of that material onto their beach in order to continue the beach nourishment that was started several years ago. And that project is projected to go forward this fall. And in discussing with Vesta, they are, have, are considering strongly doing an offshore deployment of olivine instead of placing it directly on the beach to place it in the near shore to act as a berm that will break wave energy and also dissipate the olivine more completely into the water. So I opened discussions with the advisory board about that. They seem very interested. I just wanted to give you a heads up because we may be coming back to you to seek authorization to execute a project of that nature.
To that point, Aaron or Grace, can, can you share the presentation you just gave us? Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Aaron or Dr. Andrews?
Yeah, I have a question for Aaron, being the permitting guy on this. Since these are New York State waters, what's the, what's the role of the state in, in a request to, you know, deploy olivine offshore?
Well, the two primary state agencies are the New York State DEC, under their Protection of Waters Authorization and Title Wetlands, and also the New York State Department of State Coastal Management in their Coastal Consistency Review of Any Federal Action, which in this case would be a federal Army Corps of Engineers permit. And we're, we're, they're a part of our briefing schedule. After we had brought this to you, our intention is to brief those agencies in the same manner so they understand what we're doing. I can tell you that I got very strong, positive reactions from both agencies. Dr. Andrews did a tremendous presentation prior to the First Permit Amendment with the Department of State, and they were very receptive. They, they really, they had a, literally a roomful of people attended and we got some fabulous questions, which helped us. And I've been speaking directly with people in Region One of the DEC. And, you know, fortunately, one of the primary regulators grew up within a stone's throw of the largest olivine mine in Warren, Ohio. So he understood the chemistry right away. So, yeah, those are the two agencies and we, we are, are engaged and will continue to be engaged.
Thank you.
Aaron, or one of you, or maybe it was Dr. Andrews, mentioned that Vesta is a public benefit corporation. Could you just explain what that means? And, you know, I, I know as an advisor to the town, if there's any, you know, disclosure requirements you know, you know, involvement with the, with the corporation.
Right, so a public benefit corporation is a corporation allowed under federal law that enables the, the management of the corporation to undertake a specific mission that is, that is tied to a public benefit. And then in the pursuit of that mission, they are allowed to take actions that may not be in the immediate short-term interest of shareholders, but are in the long-term interest of shareholders and in the long-term interest of executing a public benefit mission such as reducing carbon or, or sequestering carbon and, and. reducing carbon uh or or sequestering carbon and and counteracting ocean acidification. And in the interest of full disclosure, I am a uh senior coastal advisor to Vesta. And um I am compensated uh when I do work for them.
All right, thank you for that, Arum.
Oh, yeah, I'll also throw in um that's that actually we started as a nonprofit. Um and so we still have a hybrid um structure where we uh also have a nonprofit. And so actually, the majority um the majority of the work at North Sea Beach Colony has been conducted using philanthropic dollars from nonprofit funding.
Thank you for that as well.
So uh you know, just to make the comparison, I think the Suffolk County Water Authority is also a public benefits corp. Um you know, it goes through the same kind of requirements. Just just for a point of reference. But thank you guys.
I don't, I don't, John, check that, because Suffolk County Water Authority, there's no profit basis. They're quasi governmental, I believe. So I I'm not sure what the corporate structure is.
Independent public corporation operating under the authority, the public authorities law of the state of New York.
Okay, yeah, there might be a slight distinction there between what Vesta is and what Suffolk County Water Authority is.
Well, I was just, the reason I brought that up is that that's a good way to be able to move faster on things like this if you already have an established entity there. You guys, the same way.
There's no shareholders at Suffolk County Water Authority. There's no profit basis at all. So.
No, I believe they're like similar to the uh Port Authority and the MTA where they're public authorities.
I just wanted to point out the distinction there, so.
Yeah, but it's still a public benefit organization. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Okay, well, thank you again, um Aram uh Doctor uh and Kathleen as well. I don't think there are any additional questions from town board members?
Okay, thank you so much for the time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're being, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh we have a few minutes remaining uh for the work session for uh any town board member updates. If there are any updates anyone would like to provide, now's a good time.
Uh I do have one. It's a little lengthy, but I'll try to get through it. Um I just wanted to give the board an update on CCA. Uh so you know that when CCA was adopted, when we adopted it um in two thousand nineteen, we had issues with light present services area and some of the problems we've solved. Most of those problems over the last few years. And we're now uh ready to test the energy market to ascertain if there's uh competitive pricing in electric energy supply that can be optioned to the test for consideration. I think you guys are all up to speed on that. So uh I just wanted to let you know that earlier this month, Jewel issued an RFP on the town's behalf for alternative energy suppliers. So that those answers that we get will be directly will directly impact of what we can do with CCA and whether it it has all the promise that we think it does. Uh but we're expecting those responses early in September. So in anticipation, we've scheduled two town board work sessions. One is August twenty fourth and August thirty first. And possibly another uh in September, depending on uh what we get back. And we'd have those with Jewel Asset Principles to review the process, engage and all that, and then uh get the board up to speed, uh be able to answer any of your questions, and then be able to review um the pricing that we get back and see if that uh is a good thing to do based on their research. So of course, you know, the boards will have to make that decision. So that's why I think it's important that we go through that process.
Thank you, John. Um anyone else? Board updates?
Yeah, let let me mention two things. One is on Tuesday, um I led the presentation to Moody's um regarding our latest round of borrowing uh in terms of establishing the town's credit rating. Um Dorothy was there, our comptroller, and Noah, um our financial advisor. And it went very well. It went very well. We were able to answer all of the questions that the representative for Moody's uh brought up. I I, you know, believe that we're in a very strong position to maintain our triple A credit rating. Um we'll find out, but you know, based on the conversation, I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll get the best credit rating or continue with that credit rating. So um and you know, I I know that it was very helpful, certainly uh to to have Dorothy and Noah there and work together on this presentation. We really have a very strong financial team. And uh and hopefully that'll be recognized by Moody's. Um and of course, I mentioned this the other day, I did not win the cardboard boat race. So I, you know, I I'm still trying to recover from that. So uh it was uh, you know, Jim, Jim Dreamis, that is a Jim from a iconic paddler and uh, you know, work with uh Supervisor Aguars Deputy Devin. They built a really good boat, really strong fast boat and I, you know, and Devin really uh was well prepared, more prepared than I was for the race. I had a nice casual day. Um it's always nice to win, but it's but it's fun to be out on the water and um enjoying the Pecan River, which is really a shared natural resource for Riverhead and Southampton Town. And I would have liked to bring back the trophy, but you know, it happens and the next supervisor now has the uh the challenge of returning the trophy to the town of Southampton. So whoever that may be, get ready. So and I will, I'll leave the boat. It's had more wins than losses, but uh we might want to consider a new boat. Um in Riverhead, you know, I I had uh I had put together this cardboard boat, but in Riverhead, I think they had a whole team. So maybe we uh we need to think about what the fastest boat is and and work together to to build it. So just saying.
Sounds like we might need a cardboard boat commission.
Yeah.
Or our blue ribbon committee to help design the next boat. A lot of good, a lot of good coverage of the event in the local newspapers. So it was very very well received and it's grown in popularity over the years. I remember when it started probably about ten, twelve years ago. And uh there are more people on this call than attended the first race or two. And uh the newspaper reported that there might have been ten, twelve thousand people at the last event. So that's that services both communities very well.
Well, I I had the the honor to race against Supervisor Sean Walters Walters. Um I had uh Laura Jen Smith and a vet was not able to participate, a vet Aguar um because of an ankle injury. So um but you know, it's been a lot of fun. It's always been, uh everybody's been a good sport throughout. So next time I get to watch it.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Um there being no other business for work session, I would ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting and
Wait, 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 wait. We could give more updates.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't think there were others. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Tommy John, did you want to go?
Uh you can go first.
Okay, um Tuesday evening, I met with the North Sea CAC. Um Zach Athlee was there and presented his plan for thirty four portable units on Major's Path. Um we spent about two hours going over his plan. I think he got a lot of feedback on what the community liked and did not like about the project, what they would like to see as far as more information going forward. But I told Janice that based on, you know, my meeting with them and the community at that meeting, I would I would like to support and elect to consider on that project so we can move forward to a formal application.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Tommy John, did you have something else?
I I I do. Uh Karen Wolfright of the Regional Tick Borne Disease Center, Resource Center, and myself, we we met with our Trails Advisory Committee and the uh Southampton Trails Preservation Committee in regards to the Be Ready for Tick signs. Uh and those are going to be uh being installed uh in the next couple of weeks throughout the trails in Southampton Town. Also, uh something I mentioned last week is that uh the town and the village of North Haven are going to be having a series of of public forums regarding a park that's being developed over there at Love Lady Powell. That's nineteen Sunset Beach Road. And uh those are going to be on six, on uh next Wednesday, the sixteenth here at Town Hall, starting at six o'clock. And then uh the twenty fourth at North Haven Village Hall. And that's all for now.
Thank you, Tommy John. I just wanted to uh make note, I just received, and I'm sure board members did as well, notification from the Parks Department that this evening's concert planned for Good Ground Park uh has been canceled due to a forecast for inclement weather. So tonight, August tenth, Good Ground Park uh outdoor concert has been canceled.
It's gonna rain.
I, Jim, I think you're on mute.
Uh yes, just I just wanted to quickly mention that Saturday, uh this coming Saturday morning at um Kelly Doyle and I are meeting with our consultants, Gil Anderson and Aram and folks from the US Army Corps of Engineers and New York State DEC for like somewhat informal community meeting with the Tiana Beach Erosion Control District folks and and probably some also people from Village Aquaguard, just to discuss um the the FIM project. Um so we'll be having a meeting at Dockers uh on Dune Road at um nine fifteen and it runs about nine fifteen till about eleven. So anybody, there's also going to be a Zoom link for for people who can't make it in person.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
And anyone else?
Jim, what date is that?
That's uh this Saturday, this uh the August twelfth. I was kind of put to request of the uh the folks really from the Tiana Erosion Control District folks had reached out to kind of see if we could set up something uh somewhat informal, um just because they had a lot of questions, obviously concerning the project. So we put together something uh fairly quickly. Kelly put together a really good package, kind of an overview of the of the of the project and some questions and answers and whatnot. So um I think it'll be a good, you know, first kind of informational meeting for we had a meeting, um more of a formal meeting last year with the Village Aquaguard. Um and so this will be more geared towards uh the folks in the in the in the Erosion Control District uh in the Tiana, but folks in the Village Aquaguard are also obviously very uh welcome to attend as well. And I believe the mayor of the Village Aquaguard will be attending.
And that's at ten o'clock?
Uh nine fifteen uh time, nine fifteen on a Saturday morning.
Glad I asked. Thank you.
Dockers, yeah, yeah. Till about eleven and then they're gonna kick us out for brunch. But they, we we have the, we have the, I guess, the room over dock is till eleven.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
Anything else to add? If I could ask for a motion to adjourn work session and uh resume an executive session for confidential legal advice. Trucks and acquisition. Thank you, Councilman Sciovone. Second?
Second.
Councilman Bouvier, all in favor?
Hi.
I I have no gavel, so I'll knock on my wooden head there.